This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
In order to join in, the flag of allegiance.
Of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. First order of business would be to approve the agenda as any changes, Bruce.
No changes, Mr. Chairman. I would note that following the commission meeting today, continuation of board of equalization, then following that, there is a plan for the, I'll call it the building committee to meet, which is consistent of you as the chairman, Commissioner Sleep, Sheriff, Tim Eganon, Greg and myself.
Motion approved the agenda.
Second.
Can we motion the second for approval of the agenda? I'll listen in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have the conflicts. Can't we need approval of our amendments for labor aid?
So most approves.
Okay, then motion second for approval. I'll listen in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else?
I can't buy it. I'd like to thank you for your approval.
Motion second for approval of the bills. I'll listen in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brenda, do we have first name?
Yep, I do have a couple. This is from the sheriff's office. Have a new hire, Jennifer Schneider. Dispatchor one, grade one, base pay at twenty-four oh eight, full-time permanent employee, effective on four twenty-one. And then Olivia Burnett is a new hire, correction officer two, grade one, base pay at twenty-five fifty-five, effective four twenty-two.
Motion to approve the sheriff's request. Can we motion the second for approval? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I had one question. There were three people on the treasurer's office. They all, did somebody quit or they all move hires or what?
This is just step, the classification changes. I'll do those next.
Yeah, it didn't show up on here.
That classification change, right?
Yeah.
Up there, yeah. So just, yeah.
I'll listen in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, these are in the treasurer's office. These are classification changes. Basically step raises, but just going up to the next classification. Lori Marshall, Megan Schmidt and Carleen Brownlow, all going to correction officer, or county employee four, grade one, base pay at twenty-seven forty-eight, effective on four, or four twenty-one.
I want to approve changes in treasurer's office. First of all, change.
Second.
Can we motion the second for approval? I'll listen in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Chairman.
All right, any travel requests?
Have none.
Two. We're happy.
Yes, Secretary of State, your package is a request from the Spiritfish Area Chamber of Commerce. We do this annually before you to not object to the holding of Raffle with the drawing to occur on October twenty-third. The sheriff never heard of any complaints or any problems.
I'm moving, don't object to a Raffle.
Aye. Can we motion the second to not object? I'll listen in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Abatements.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. All right, there are two of them today. The Sturrock Homestake Opera House. They turned in their exemption. Why this happened was they turned in their exemption form this last year and they put on, instead of putting the two percent or whatever it was before, they put seventy-five, had a new director and I think, and they did add some new office space, so I think there might have been some confusion on what should have, what should have been exempt, right? So when they got their bill, they went, whoa. Because it went up a lot. So it used to be valued at fifty-three thousand, the Opera House. That was non, that was non-exempt. They did add some office space, so we actually went remeasured and now it's at actually around five percent, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand for the value. So we want to abate six hundred and two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That would be twenty-five percent of the value that was put on as non-exempt mistakenly. A lot of the stuff that there's releasing out is the shooting range and, and then a little office space in the basement to a church and really it's, the price per square foot is a lot less than the, the Opera House. I mean, it's valued much higher at the high quality that it is and so it's.
Who do approve the abatement? Second.
Can we motion the second for approval? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll listen in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Second one. This one is an airport hangar out at the Spiritfish Airport. This gentleman came in last January. He has, he has a couple of hangars that he owns and he, it was, this one was way more than the other ones. And we did look at him. We went out there and actually we reassessed all the airport hangars in the air, at the airport and his should have been lower and more equalized with the other ones. But he didn't bring in his, I sent it out to him right away. I just got it back a couple of weeks ago. So this is actually for twenty-twenty-three tax year. Payable in twenty-four. So we fixed it again for the taxes paid right now, but this is for a year before. So this would be for fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars worth of value. So we'd be paying back, I mean the.
Do we do that? Have we done that? I thought we don't do that.
We have, yeah.
So it's, I meant to put it in for last year and he just didn't return it until a couple of weeks ago, so.
So it's.
It's corrected already. The taxes paid now, but it was meant to do last year when he was paying his taxes. He just didn't return it.
But that was on him, not on.
Right, yeah. It was, it was sent to him and he had it. It just, so Spiritfish, I went through Spiritfish already. They agreed to it, but it's, it's up to you, I guess, whether we corrected it, so.
Brett, did it take him the better part of a year to return that?
Yeah, yeah, it was a year, yeah. So.
I'm moving to not approve the abatement.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to not approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. I'll listen in favor of the motion. Brenda, you probably better do a roll call, please.
Jenny?
Aye.
Tisto?
Aye.
Sleep?
Aye.
Lenigan?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Sheriff Dean.
Good morning. Public Safety and Services Center is doing well. I would say we've got about twelve more projects going on up there that are yet to be completed. As discussed before, these are such things as the monument signage that needs to go up. We need to make a correction to the building signage. Specifically on the building signage, that was a hundred percent my fault. I'm not sure how emergency management got left off the side of the building. It was never the intent to do so. It just simply happened. We're working hard to try to correct that. But that's an example of some things that are going on. There's another wiring issue, some conduit that was supposed to be put in place that they're working hard to try to get corrected. Radio type issues that we're, we're dealing with. I, I still believe that we are on a good pace and we're, I'm hoping that we can finish this project in total by the middle of July. I don't see any, any major obstructions towards that. In terms of the business of running the facility, it's going extremely well. In fact, our, our facility right now is outperforming what we had conservatively projected. I'm happy to tell you now that as of today, we're housing fifty-two federal inmates. Should that continue over the course of the year, and of course, there's no way to predict that. These numbers are going to go up and they're going to go down, but at fifty-two, that's a revenue stream of a hundred and nine thousand two hundred dollars for Lawrence County. So we're doing very well. Outside of that, if you're curious, I think our high, if I'm not mistaken to this point, since the facility opened, is ninety-four inmates. I do anticipate that that'll slowly creep up over the course of the year and will be very close, if not right on, to what we had projected early on, which is just about that hundred to a hundred and ten mark. Our staff is adjusting well. I wish I could say a hundred percent of the staff was adjusting well, but of course, it is a big adjustment and, and we're getting through it. And I see nothing but a positive effect moving forward and we see that in specific regards to the people that are applying. We're, we're getting some outstanding candidates for those positions and hopefully that translates into longevity. Having said that, the Sturgis Ambulance Project that Dr. Alken and I are working on is, I, I wouldn't say it's on hold necessarily, but Sturgis, if you're aware, is going through the process of hiring a new director. I'm to understand that some of those interviews are even taking place now. And so what we're going to try to do is meet maybe as early as next week, unless the prospective new director should desire to be part of those conversations. But at any rate, we know that we need to meet with, at minimum, the mayor and their public safety director and we're trying to get that scheduled. So that's what I have.
Okay, any questions for the chair?
Is, is Deadwood interested, David?
We, we have been down that road in the past, Commissioner. It's a great question. I suspect that we, we will re address that issue and see if that interest maintains. One of the things that of course we're all concerned about is response times. And as I recall, the, the response not, times between the Deadwood Ambulance Service and the Sturgis Ambulance Service is not extreme, but of course, it's always of concern. No matter what you do, there's going to be a line somewhere and just where we draw that line is, is really the art of the negotiation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Bay?
Would we get started on some of these things before we go over to the hearing, Brenda?
Sounds good, Chair.
It's not like we have several public hearings today, eh? If we get started on yours, by eight twenty-five, we've got a public hearing, so it's like roots in the woodshed.
That's all right.
And I don't think they can do the bill.
Eight thirty, yeah.
All right, this lady of stuff, sir.
You know, see Kyle Mappus is here from the city of Spiritfish as well. I'll go down with the regarding those three issues.
I'll start with this utility permit. We have Jesse Dupont with Celerity has, he's issued several requests, several permits. I only brought the one. I, I talked to them numerous times. I told them until they get their current work completed that it would be pretty hard to get anything done. I wasn't here last week, so I wasn't able to go check on their progress. I did check in with my guys a couple of times and this morning again, they, they feel that they have made some pretty good progress on, on the cleanup and the road ditches and things like that, so. I did put some conditions on this permit that the utility must be, and I express must be, at the outermost limits of the right of way. We've had some issues where they, they put the, they put their utilities in our road even though they said they didn't. I also put that the utilities must be a minimum depth or deeper than that specified in our ordinance because we actually did a repair out there on, on, by, by Commissioner Sleep's place and we dug right through one of their brand new fiber optic lines. They were twenty-four inches deep. We did bring that to their attention and, and they, they apologized. Didn't really fix their line, but we got our job done.
Well, I'll just bring it up. I mean, obviously, most of you know that they tore down some fence under my place when they were putting their utility in and, and I, I've talked to them several months ago. They assured me they'd take care of it. They haven't and the property is unusable to me. I don't feel I should have to go put all the rock and everything that they broke up. The fence is laying on the ground in places and I absolutely will not support anymore until they go up and take care of that. Except to the rest of you.
I have also put as a stipulation that all, all work pertaining to this permit and any future permits, the, the work must be completed to Lawrence County's satisfaction before any other permits are issued, so. I'm going to leave it up to you guys. I mean, I'm not happy with the work they're doing. They've done, they, they've created a lot of issues, but they are making headway, it sounds like. I will make a trip out there again today when I'm done here and have a look. But as far as this permit goes, I'll leave this up to you guys.
I'll make a motion that they need to take care of what they've done before they move on to the project. Is that a good way to word it?
So not issuing it for.
I'm trying to.
Not, not, so you're forcing me to deny the permit essentially, aren't you?
Yeah, essentially.
I'll second it for discussion. Bruce.
Oh, I'm just going to say if we could clarify the motion, but it's a motion to deny.
Until prior work is complete, well, just deny.
Till prior work is complete, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, for purposes of discussion. Richard, would your motion, would that mean then that John Bay would have discretion so he would not presently issue any permits? But if between now and your next meeting, he was to go out and find that they had satisfactorily completed the remedial work that he could then have the discretion to issue another permit?
Yeah, I think you mentioned in your statement that that's the way you want to go with that. I like that much, but.
That was your motion.
So it's not to deny it.
We just need to reword the motion.
Yeah, it's not to deny it. It's to approve it contingent, conditioned upon.
With John Bay having discretion.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Well, prior to calling for the question, what type of assurance do I have? I mean, they destroyed personal property. And they've made no effort whatsoever to come out and correct that. What, what do I have to, as a landowner?
What recourse do you have?
An attorney.
I shouldn't have to do that. I mean, it's this board that's allowing them to go into our community and do this work.
Go ahead, Bruce.
John, you've talked to Pabby, right? I think or whoever was doing it, Celerity, if they're, so they're.
I've talked to everybody involved numerous times.
All right. Any further discussion?
Well, the fence is part of the project. Replace it wherever they care out. So I read the contract.
Bruce?
John, I can't remember. Do we have a bond in place for this or?
We did not do any additional bond. We, what, alls we did is the, just the existing ordinance that says they have to repair or replace any, any damages that they do in installation of their, their utilities.
I'm just wondering, are you the chairman?
It's a good way to say it.
So that permit, the, the damage that Chairman references, pretend for different permit. However, could this permit require a bond that could be then used at the end to replace?
I think, yeah. I think ordinance oh seven oh one does specify that no other permits will be issued until, until existing conditions are, are taken care of. So, yeah, we could issue a permit like this, make, you know, with the, with the condition that, that all work is, you know, completed from prior, prior permits.
I like the idea of requiring a bond because that'll make it go to a different level of employee of the company. You might get somebody's attention, like something's not happening.
Yes, that was, yeah. I, Richard, I don't know what the appropriate amount would be. If it's a nominal amount, I'd say five thousand dollars or something to, to get their attention. So in other words, if the motion were passed, John Bay would have the discretion to issue the permit, but another condition would be that they would post a performance bond of five thousand dollars.
That is what our original, our original ordinance was. It was changed recently to a hundred percent of the value of the utility. In this case, their estimated construction cost is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I think, I think it could be up to that amount.
That's right. It, that was at the discretion of the board.
Up, up to, no, a total of, yeah. Yeah. And up to your discretion. I don't, I just threw five out as, as an idea.
That's always been the minimum. That's always been what our bond was, five thousand.
I will, sir.
Okay, I'm going to do that at this time and not participate. Sure, you can take a look from here.
Okay.
So I think there is a motion.
So, yeah, I'm just trying to think where we're at here. So we do have a motion on the table to approve the permit contingent on work satisfied, prior work being a satisfactory condition for the race superintendent. Do we want to amend the motion by adding a bond on or, or what's your feeling on that? I guess the, the chair would entertain a motion to add a bond on to the, under the new permits. It wouldn't be the existing permits, but it would be upcoming permits. Hundred and sixty thousand on project?
I think that's what John said.
That's just for the old bell section of their, of their, that's the permit that's in front of us right now.
Current permit.
I'm going to amend the motion to approve the thirty thousand on bond.
For this permit.
For this. An old bell rule.
As another condition precedent.
Thank you.
There a second on that?
I'll, I'll make a motion, we approve of the motion. You made a motion on.
I made an amendment. I made an amendment to your motion. I need to second on that.
I shouldn't second because I made the original motion, so.
Oh, you can still second.
Okay, all right, I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend, pardon the motion, to add a thirty thousand dollar bond. So we have a motion to amend the prior motion to add a $30,000 bond on to the new permits along the old bell road. Well, I guess on Mr. Bay, is that is 30,000? Would that, how far would that go if they did some damage to the road, the cobbler?
Well, that that would depend on the damage. I mean, it's that's along an asphalt section of roads, so it wouldn't take very, very long to eat up $30,000 on an asphalt road.
I mean, so I'm just thinking this through, there might be, I don't want an unintended consequence. And so if 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 it's for that bond is for this work and and you said it that you're, are you establishing a value of the work? So if there is damage done, you would only have, what would you say, 30,000, 30,000 to do the work? So perhaps the bond should reflect a better estimate of what it would take to do the remedial work.
I think it would go higher.
You know, our ordinance would still have, you know, the the ability to recover damages as well. It's in our ordinance to recover damages over and above the actual, the actual repaired damages.
Yeah, you don't have to have a figure there, that's just fixed to damages.
I just know our new ordinance, you know, when we put in the actual cost of construction within the right of way. And I've been asking everybody when they fill out a permit to put that in. In this case, you know, they put 160,000. That's their estimate of their installation. That's not a, that's not a repair of a piece of road. If they destroyed a mile of paved road, I mean, that's that could be $375,000, who knows, right?
John Bay, you're you're out there or you're forming our monitoring, so the likelihood of that happening is probably fairly remote, right? They're checking from time to time?
We're checking all the time, but that hasn't stopped the damages that we've incurred. We can't be there 100% of the time that they're doing work. And I mean, they drove a dozer right down one of our roads. We weren't there when that happened.
Okay, I would like to amend my motion, amend my motion and raise the limit to 50% or 50% of the contract.
Fifty percent.
Down to eighty thousand.
Thirty percent of the 160,000, which would be eighty thousand. Is there a second on that?
Can you second my, Bruce?
I did. I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay.
May I ask John Bay a question? Sure, further discussion. John, do you see any thinking in this, any unintended consequence of requiring this bond? It seems like it's been a slow progression. It shouldn't be unexpected by them. I wouldn't think, they're probably accustomed to doing it in other circumstances. Is that all fair?
I would think that they're used to having a bond in place and on other projects.
Not that we're trying to like meet them, but I'm just trying to think if we're causing ourselves any sort of unforeseen problem that I can't imagine. And they would have two weeks to address it anyway, if there is some of this.
I know this project through Solarity, you know, it's a grant project. I don't know where they stand with their grant and their timeframe. I've never been given that information, so I don't know if if there's a timeframe when their grant is sunsetted or if they have to have it done by a certain time, I don't know.
So they've had some trouble getting the cable deep enough, having the bond placed. Does that give us recourse down the road if we run into problems with that cable?
Well, our ordinance protects us either way. If we run into a cable that's less than 36 inches at the deepest point of the adjacent right of way, it's not our responsibility to repair or or financially compensate it for for replacement.
The bond will go away if completion of the project.
I think two years is a, I'd like, I think it said two years after the project. Or at up to two years, it's our discretion.
I think we would assume the chairman, the bond probably would have been returned to them by then, so we would rely upon another portion of the ordinance for any type of recovery.
Great, any further discussion or questions on that? So the motion that's on the table right now is to amend the prior motion to increase the bond to 50% or $80,000 of the project for the old bell road fiber optic cable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the amendment now reads to the prior motion that we apply a 50% bond or $80,000 onto the current project. I believe we need to vote on that because we just amended that amendment. So now we need to approve the amendment. So all those in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. The motion on the table current now is that we will not approve, let's see, we will approve the permit application for the old bell road contingent upon the satisfaction of a road superintendent that the work, prior work being done is completed satisfactorily and that we will include or add on a or include a 50 or 50% or $80,000 bond on to the new permit. Does everybody understand that? If all those in favor of that say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, it's time for a public hearing. Resolution 2025 dash.
That's the permit.
Petition vacating a portion of every local intersection line. Bruce, do you want to bring us up to speed on this, please?
I'll give it a shot. I thought that maybe Mr. Geiger would be here, but I think it's very straightforward. This in Deer Mountain, there's a sale thing that I believe in as part of that. They're looking to vacate Tansy Trail, which had been previously platted. I don't know about looking at the attached exhibit that should be in your packet that it provided access. Anybody else's access is going to be adversely affected, I should say. I I would note that when the original petition was submitted, it was submitted on two separate pages. The law requires that it be submitted on one page, in other words, on front and back. We've reached out to the petitioners and they do plan on coming in and signing an amended petition, which would be front and back, a duplicate page. But in the meantime, we do have the original again, which is on two different pages. So if you would make a motion to approve this vacation, it would be subject to the petitioners coming in and re-signing that petition back, if that makes sense. And I would also state that the standard here for approvals that the public enters will be better served on a vacation and not by role by state law.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public for or against this resolution. And at this time, if there is anyone in the room or online, we would ask that you state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the body of the room that would like to speak at this time? How about online? There is one caller on the show. Hey, I'm seeing or hearing you one more time in the body of the room. Seeing anything, all of the close of public hearing and offer to the board for their discussion or actions.
Motion to approve conditional upon him coming in and re-signing the application.
Is there just another number of signatures?
Is it just there?
Case, we got a motion. For approval, any further discussion? Seeing that all those prepared their motion, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's a pile of.
Bruce, eight three. I think the bond thing is very common.
We could have just followed John's, like, days.
Will do the bid opening this time?
John, there were no attendants, were there?
There was none. We do have a representative from Bros here to kind of go over these. We'll open them and then we can take a minute and look them over. Let me do this. Yeah, go ahead, that's awesome. You can read them if you want.
Nope. Don't make me read. Don't make me run one of these, apparently.
Yeah.
Here, for the record, this is for the data we for the maintenance road bridge project.
That is correct.
Structure 51 dash 118 dash 111.
Yes, sir. This is a project that we got a a big grant on. This is also the project that we did all the preliminary work on to get the bridge bypass built and to close the bridge ahead of time. So we're moving along quite quickly on this to be opening bids this soon in the in the process. That's correct. We do have, if you'll notice on that bid tab sheet, we have engineer's estimate, which is 994,118. This is an 8020 grant. Our first bid is from Dakota Ready Mix. It does have a bid bond with it.
What'd you say at West John and Son?
Dakota Ready Mix. Their total bid price is 671,791. That's 671,791. Our next bid is from North Star. It also accompanies a bid bond. Their total price, their total bid is 656,147. That is 656,1700. The next bidder we have is Heavy Constructors Constructors. It does accompany a bid bond. Their total bid price is 661,023 and 64 cents. That's 661,023.64. RCS is our next bidder. It does accompany a bid bond. Total bid price is 831,834 and 22 cents. That's 831,834.22. Haynesworth Benning is our next bidder. It does have a bid bond. The total bid price is 696,704 and 75 cents. That is 696,704.75. The next bid is Helm, H A L M E Incorporated. Does have a bid bond. And their total price is 633,798 and 60 cents. That is 633,798.60. The next bidder is Mainline Construction Constructing. Does have a bid bond. Their total price is 694,221 dollars and 50 cents. That's 694,221.50. And Rogers Construction Incorporated, RCI, is our last bid. Does have a bid bond. And their price is 697,183. That's 697,183.00. Yes, sir. I'd like to also thank all of the contractors that bid. It's a lot of bidders that's doing real nice.
I know.
Yeah. Just go in the 100ers office, I'll set you up, I'll be in there in a second, so. I do. We have our bridge inspection. This is from the state DOT. We do have three bridges that are on our annual inspect, we're down to three bridges on our annual inspection. That's a, that's good news. But we do have to sign the agreement. We have a, the the engineer's estimate is to not exceed $9,700 for the inspections and we'll be responsible for 20% of that. But we do need the signature in blue ink. The state is very adamant about that, so if you if you don't have one, I have a blue pen. I have our gravel, our regravel list here. I presented you one last year. This would be what we have proposed for the work that we're going to do this summer. The Elk Creek Road, Spring Run Road, Big Lead Road, Galena Road, Erickson Road, Crooked Oaks Road, the last portion of Brownsville Road, but that's contingent upon the the Pennington County project being done. I don't want to redo that road if we're, if they're going to be hauling out of that gravel pit all summer. So that's going to be either a late summer project or contingent if we even do it at all, so. But that does bring us to our 19.80 miles of road. That is our budget, the amount we budgeted for to cover what we did there. Also, we do have the Roughlock Falls Road that we entered into the contract with the state in Fish and Parks to do that. So we'll be getting paid to do that one. So those are the roads that are on our our gravel list for this year. If you guys have any any comments or if you have any anything that you want added or deleted or change, certainly let me know. We got time to to make amendments. We've got time to, to make amendments to that at this time. Other than that, if you don't have anything for me, I'm done. I do think we have the City of Spearfish here to talk about their road closure and their Arshin Hill Street.
Chairman, last week, John Bay, I followed up with the city. We talked to Kyle, Kyle Madison, here, City Engineer, City of Spearfish. And expressed to him your concerns about that the city plans to back pass a resolution to take on Hill Street. I think you've seen from some emails, communications that the city is resolved to do that, to pursue that, taking that on. And secondarily, perhaps most importantly, was this issue of liability for the county for the work that's being done. Of course, you didn't hire the contractor to do the work that's being done. Part of a city project. And so as a proposed solution, what we would present to you today is we do have a certificate of liability insurance from Stansel Group with a county name as an official named insured or a certificate holder at the bottom of the page. An amount of two million dollars in general aggregate. And so I don't know if that meets your requirements or not, but that was the solution that we came up with. I think John Bay just here would say that this is very similar to what we would require if it were been a county project. So we're trying to replicate that sort of reverse engineering in a way. And with that, I would refer to either John or Kyle for any comments.
Sure, I can just summarize real quick. Yeah, so we are scheduled to all have resolution for road transfer on the next council meeting, May fifth, for consideration of approval there. So that shouldn't be an issue. We've already annexed that portion of the roadway. I think a year and a half ago when that Hill Street apartment parcel got annexed in as well. So just a matter of that. And I believe you guys have to have a resolution as well on your side when those two are done and advertised for a certain amount of time. Then we can send that into the county and they can make the official road transfer between, between that. In the meantime, the insurance, what you got, the county name there should cover any, any issues in between there where you guys are not on the hook or don't have, don't have any risk on that. So again, this is a, it's a private development project to, in the city now technically. So that's, it's a little bit different. We talked a little bit about how, how to look at these you know, down the road. And maybe it's better to do that at time of annexation or at least right, you know, before they start construction might be a better idea, but.
Thank you, Chairman. I think what Kyle is saying is, is that in hindsight, the idea would have been for the city to have already taken on that portion of road and it would have facilitated the discussions we're presently having. And so I think that, that, that would be the path that the city would hopefully choose in the future. Is that fair, Kyle?
I think it's fair. It's that late time between annexation and the consultants getting the plans ready and everything. That was about a year and a half before they started actual construction. So somewhere in there where, you know, we're not equipped to take care of gravel in a county, not very, not very often anyways, but so maybe it's at time of construction, but we can have those conversations later and try to find all that junk anywhere. That's just the regular way we do things.
But well, I like where that's going. I mean, that's in a number of places I would address issues like that. The other thing is, is, and we have historically, I don't know that we still do, but there is opportunity for, if the city were to annex, or there used to be at least, that the county would still would still take care of the gravel for this, because there was, used to be an exchange of, of maintenance, I guess, where there were some roads that the, there were joint maintenance and somewhere the county just extended what they were doing because it was, even though it's your road at that point, we kind of agreed to, to take care of this piece and you would agree to take care of this piece. You know, your plows just go a little further and ours just do a little more too. So if there, you know, an area, for example, like this, you're not used to doing gravel, it might be an opportunity for, for us to participate again with each other. Be your jurisdiction, but we could, it's like, well, if you plow this much further than what you're doing, then we'll plow this much further than what we're doing. And if we throw some gravel down, we'll figure out how to do that. That used to be a thing with, with our department bowl back in the day, but, and I don't know where those are anymore. Maybe it's not at all, and maybe it is. Well, I'm, I, again, I don't, I, I don't want to be holding up this project any longer. These, I, I'm not in favor of the road closure, but I totally understand the road closure. There, this, this project can't continue without doing this. You can't, you can't build this road with, with traffic on it. So for, you know, for the safety of, of the citizens and things like that, we, you know, this needs to happen. I think their, their plan was also for a partial road closure once the road was in place for the utility installation. And I guess that's something would, we would address at that time, but I'm, I, you know, I can see the need for it and as long as the road is transferred and I was, you know, and you guys are happy with the liability of it, I'm, I'm all for it. But I think I made the motion in this. I'm, I'm satisfied with, with what we have. So I don't know that, how we want to handle that part, but.
Maybe you want to entertain a motion that the conditions that you opposed are, have been met.
I'll make, I'll make that motion then.
As supervised by the highway superintendent?
Yes. And I'll make the second.
Okay, a motion in a second. You want to read that, Brandon?
I'll listen to it and transcribe it exactly how it would stand.
Motion to operate, I think, also motion to authorize the closure as the conditions precedent have been met. Liability insurance has been provided. The city has committed to pursuing the transfer of Hill Street, all subject to the highway superintendent's conditions that he may oppose for the closure.
All right, everyone, nowhere we're at.
One quick question on the liability insurance. There is deductible. Is the county responsible for that? Or would that be in the city that's in?
We have, we have not contemplated. I do not have the answer for that. I don't know. Okay, a motion for us?
If you have nothing more for me, I will go look with the engineer at these. Oh, he's back.
They're all good. They all looked good.
Okay.
Yeah, we just.
Yeah, just as Daniel said, you know, that, again, this is a, whatever we decide here on this, on this bridge bid, you know, it's at the, it's ultimately at the state DOT's, you know, concurrence. Whatever we decide here today, that's what will be, so. Let's see.
So our job is to accept the most responsible.
That's correct. Which I guess it's this Helm? Holme. Holme Inc. was the lowest at six hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents, so. And everything was fine in there? They had anything in it? So I guess I would, I would recommend that we take the lowest responsibility, responsible bidder from Holme Inc.
With all of the superintendent's recommendations and accepted the bid from Holme Inc. for the new bridge, continued upon DOT acceptance, raising any irregularities.
Okay, a motion in a second for approval and a further discussion. Statement all in favor of the motion. Say aye. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thanks, Daniel. I'll make copies of these and get you everything back, okay?
That's good. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
We'll take a five minute break. We're going to wait till nine o'clock because they're all public hearing. I'm able to take it.
There we go.
The first order here will have recessed county commissioners and convene in support of adjustment prior to going forward.
We recessed county commissioners and convene in support of adjustment.
Okay, there are much in a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Most, most carried. Alright, this is the time and place for public hearing on conditional use permit 497. The owner applicant is Chad Anderson.
Okay, so this property is just Highway 35 down Eagle Road and then the full lane is the actual road. And Chad would like to be able to operate a commercial business and storage of equipment, sanitation equipment, out on the property, much like Mike Anderson used to have out there with similar thing. Mike has sold his business and not in that business anymore. And Chad would like to just be able to do basically the same thing that was being done there prior. I checked it out. He lives on site, so his house is there. And he'd like to be able to put in a level area for the portable toilets. And then sooner or later, he'd like to be able to build a shop, but that might not happen right away. But he wanted you guys to be aware that he would like to. You guys have a packet, just kind of show me where he wants to put it in that packet that we're drawing.
Okay, this public hearing will start our public hearing and allow the anyone in the room to participate for against this as well as anyone online. So at this time, is there anyone in the body of the room that would like to address this? How about online? I'm not seeing or hearing anything. One more time for folks in the room. We'll close the public hearing and offer to the board.
I'll move to approve conditional use permit 497.
You know, the conditions are stated, just to make sure. It just, there's no changes?
Yep.
Okay.
Close second. There's almost been a second. Further discussion?
Everything seemed to be in place. It's been operated out that way. Been no objections throughout the entire process.
So then, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Yep, thank you.
Sorry.
And that comes tonight picking. So Brenda will go ahead and go down to.
We had a, we had a, a Jerick up Sunday.
Oh, Jeff is here. Do you need this section?
Wait, we gotta review.
Wait, do we review kit condition to use now as the board of adjustment as well?
Probably should, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
Oh, okay. Since there's, since he's gonna talk about the CUP, we should probably just say in a board of adjustment. Okay, that's fine.
Ready? Jeff, you want to come up?
You bet.
Morning. I have Jeff Mesner here from J C J. And this is regarding the Boulder campground that was approved in Boulder Canyon just across from what was the Amish Furniture Store up on the hill. They had a fire there. Please go ahead and have a seat. In February of last year, 24, there was a long investigation from what I understand. A lot of the fire started and whatever. I'm not sure what conclusion of it was. But after the fire investigation, I understand is now kind of in the hands of the insurance company trying to get that all paid off and stuff. Everything was cleaned up except for this part. And what this is, this is actually the new addition they put on. And you can tell that it actually survived because it was done correctly with sheetrock and all that stuff. It did. And Jeff had just told me that once everything is done, that's gonna come down as well. But everything's cleaned up. So the question, they want to continue as soon as, as soon as they get their payout. Question to the commissioners is, it's been over a year. Has it gone anywhere because of this? Are you okay with continuing with this conditional use permit another year before another review?
Yeah, we just, because usually once it's installed for a year, that usually needs to get canceled. But this is a unique situation, so we thought it was best to at least ask you guys how you want to go forward. So we have it in the minutes. Either you're taking it away or, and they can start over, you know, later.
And Jeff, sure for any.
Or you can.
Answer any questions you might have.
Did you have anything you want to add?
No, the only reason that survived because we had to have a firewall there. And it did, but it burned into it. And now there's mold and it's getting tore down as soon as we get a settlement. Like I told Lambert, you find out how good your insurance company is when you have a claim. And it's, it's been hell. I mean, I'm sorry about language, but it's at 14 months. And it's, but we expect it within 30 days. It's with Lloyd's of London and they're from London. They're a bunch of investors. Yes, I'm sure you are. And, but it's, and it's gonna get increasingly harder to get insurance out of it. It's tough. But I get 10 times that much insured back in Doral County and no problems there. Of course, I've never had a claim like this either, but, but it's not with Lloyd's of London either.
Of course, they'll have to start over with the new building permit application and all the stuff.
And we will do that. And we plan on proceeding or going on with it, continuing it. Like I say, I'm hoping the next 30 days will happen.
What is staff recommendation on this? Do you have one?
We really didn't have one too much.
They did do, as asked, was can you clean up as much of the debris and, you know, just so it wasn't sitting out there? And he did do that.
I can't come up with a good reason to cancel it, I guess.
But I know in the past, we've done 12-month extensions and I would, I'd make the motion to. I wouldn't do, when was approved?
Well, it was, you have the, oh yeah, we didn't, it should be.
What do you look for?
Eleven to, and then the approval was given January 23rd, 2024 from the county commission. Then there was the fire literally about a month, you know, or 15, 24. So in theory, a year would have been February, but we were, we had been, he's been letting us know, like, we thought we were close on getting payment. And then it just didn't happen.
I'll give them, my, my, my motion will be to extend the conditional use until 12 months from the original approval to get a building permit for the new building.
That's fair. So that would be, so 12 months from.
From 1/23/24.
1/23/24.
Maybe we're gonna be having no problems, I'll say. But then they have, they'll have nine months or something to get a building permit. And then to have a review at that time status.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'm just getting out. I think that there's a neighbor across the highway that, that I think continues to not like the project, didn't like it when it was granted and doesn't like the fact that it's not cleaned up. I think that so his satisfaction, I'm paraphrasing. So I just, I throw that out there as part of the consideration as well, just so the record is.
I didn't see that, that note and read it, yes.
I don't want to interrupt you, but as soon as we were approved to tear down what we did, within a week, we had it gone. Because we waited for a long time. And as soon as the insurance company approved us tearing that part down, we did it within a week. I mean, it was gone.
Alright, they're doing most on the floor. I'll move to share the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. I appreciate it, guys. Have a good day.
Thanks, gentlemen.
I move to recess as the board of adjustment. I'm going to reconvene as the county commission. Are we down to, please fill that away. Brenda, you wanna run down to 1045 and.
Is this enough time to do it?
It won't take very long. Just an annual thing. Yeah, so. So we're just kind of, that's an overview. It's time for our fourth bond payment already, which is hard to believe. The payments are due in June and December. And so we will need to do some transfers of the money that we have signed throughout the years. We have some funds assigned back from December 27th, 22, January 24th, 2023, October 24th, 23, and January 23rd, 2024. The money is on December 27th, 22, or 610,000. That's the remainder of a million dollars that we had assigned. And so that's just the remainder of that. We used the 390 of last year. So that's the remainder of that one. And then on January 24th, 23, we, we assigned it 911,000 to the project. And then on October 24th, we had 23, we assigned 892,318.92. And that was the part of the COVID monies. That they gave us, that we got them in two separate years. And so that is that part of that. And then in January 23rd, 24, we did 550,000. And that comes to a total of 2,963,318.92. So if you still choose to do that, to continue with these bond payments for 25, and then with the hopes that the business model will continue to, as Sheriff Dean talked this morning, looking at about 100,000 a year or a month, which would, if that continues, I budgeted for a million dollars of revenues coming in, which this year we won't hit that. But hopefully next year we will. And so hoping with this and that, maybe we won't have to do any transfer next year. That's my hope. We'll see. So I would need a motion for all four of those to allow us to use those assigned funds and then a motion to transfer from the general fund to the bond redemption.
Do you say the motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion. We'll post the motions.
He said for both?
Well, all he was.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second it. Any further discussion? Okay, saying that, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Ooh, that's all I've got on that. Thank you.
Mr. Beagle, you're up.
Great. I do appreciate your time this morning. I know you, folks are very busy. I just want to talk just a couple minutes about a program that we have in Lee Dedwood School District. It's called Teammates. I think everybody or most of you are familiar with a gentleman named Tom Osborne. He used to be coach for the Nebraska Cornhuskers for years very successfully.
Could we have you state your name and that for our record?
Sure. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm Jay Beagle. And I'm the middle school principal for the Lee Dedwood School District. Thank you. Anyway, Tom Osborne and his wife created this program with some of his football players in a middle school in Lincoln, Nebraska, and is very successful with getting kids graduated and, and going to school. Their attendance is much better. Their behavior was much better. So why I'm here today is we have started this program in our, in Lee Dedwood School District about two or three years ago with quite a bit of success. And the reason I'm here today is that our success is showing that we need a lot more mentors than we have right now. We have 15 students that are waiting mentors to be paired up with students in our school district. Our kids are, are seen once a week by their mentor for an hour. That's the commitment that we have. So what I'm asking is that, and Ms. Bender, our coordinator for our teammates program, is not be able to be here today. But she will be able to provide you with some, some more information that possibly that you give to your businesses. And so the biggest thing that I need today is to let you know we need mentors. So if you can speak to any of your employees that you have or people that you know in, in your community, to let them know the need that our school district has for our students, it would be greatly appreciated. I know you guys have a lot on your agenda and I appreciate your time this morning.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Any questions for Dylan before he leaves?
No, it's a good program.
It's a good program. I just would highlight the fact that we have another significant billing to do with intention in the bills this week. And these are the programs that have to divert those kids and we need to be able to support those.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Amber, I think for 1045, this will be the first reading in public hearing for conditional. Change of zoning, 366. For Spring Creek. So we will not take any action today. We'll just have our hearing and our second reading and action will be on the next meeting. Amber, you want to start us off on this?
Again, this is for Spring Creek LLC, Frank and Jason Ward. Jason is online. He told me he would. This is basically, they're looking at doing a change of zoning on the parcel directly adjacent to City of Spearfish. It's kind of right behind where the, there's a, well, used to be a CUP for the county with the car place that's there, right on the, right on the highway. That got annexed inside city limits, so it's now inside city limits that old CUP is. But it's the property directly adjacent to that. And he is looking at going from an A1 to an A2. It does meet our Highway 85 corridor plan because it's within that 600 feet of the city limits and, you know, where that is going in there. It's right in that area. And then basically from there, he would have to go forward through the City of Spearfish for plating requirements as of right now. But that's really, right now, it's just strictly the change of zoning. They're not asking for anything else. He did provide you, just, he wanted to be open with everybody of what he was ultimately looking at for the City of Spearfish. That was an exhibit provided in there. Not that one. Next one. With his whole packet. But obviously, he's gonna have to go through the City of Spearfish to, to do anything there. But he did provide you a full write-up, meeting all of the requirements of the change of zoning request, showing all the parcels, the written summary, where it all is, location. This is kind of his general overtake of what he'd like to see over time. And it, it meets everything that we asked within that boundary in our Highway 85 corridor.
Okay, probably will. While we're having a public hearing at this time, I would ask that if anyone wants to speak for or against this, that they would, please state your name and address for the record. And there will, is there anyone in the body of the room that would like to speak at this time?
Go back, go back to that plat. There's Amber above my shop. So is that red line, is that an easement? Is that the one that we had to give Frank? Because that was supposed to continue over to Lookout Mountain Road. Is that correct? I, there. I can't read that.
So it's a current platted access easement for future use.
So will that continue all the way over to?
That's a plating question, not a change of zoning. So that's, that's when it gets to Spearfish for the plating. That's when they're gonna look at like those easements and all of that stuff. We don't usually deal with those when it comes to the changes.
Okay, we'll get back to the hearing. Is there anyone in the body of the room that wants to speak for or against this change of zoning? How about online? Is there anyone online that wants to speak for it? I'm not seeing anything. One more time, anyone in the body of the room? We'll close the public hearing and offer to the board for discussion, but this is the first reading. We won't take action today.
Is, is this just, just over east of Reich's place? Frank Ward's place?
No, this is on the east side of Highway 85.
You know where Bickle Shop used to be?
Johnson Lane.
On the highway?
Buckles.
Buckles, I'm sorry.
Where are you turning and go Saint Andrews Road?
Yeah. So it's US 85 and Johnson Lane. And then right now, there's two, the City of Spearfish rezoned Buckles Old Shop. And there's two shops there. I don't remember what the other one is. It's yours. Okay, it's like, it's, it's the two shops and they're both C2, which would be the Spearfish's commercial designation, one of the commercial designations. That's the blue right here. And then this is still City Ag. And then it would be this one. So it's directly adjacent to that City Ag. And if you look at our Highway 85 corridor study, this is exactly what we wanted, is to go from commercial to a little bit larger lots. To add, like to keep it bigger.
But when we did this study, did we not have that, as he's asking about the access, is that at the 660-foot mark of access all north and south, all along that property?
Yes.
For future?
Yep, and that's what I.
That's where it's coming from.
Yeah, and I think basically it's gonna be like that, basically this boundary line right here is possibly over time, there'd be like a service road or something, you know, along. Yeah, eight to 10 acres, little larger lots along that.
I think the DOT said at the time that they were not gonna allow any more approaches under the highway. So that was the idea to pre-plan for a common entrance, right?
Yeah, because this, this entrance here is the only one, like they will not allow any more. There's about, what, six between Spearfish and Mel, I think, right, right about that, maybe even over six.
And then Spearfish with their control, they're putting that access easement all on property that's under their control rather than.
So then it'll access commercial from the backside instead of the highway, yeah.
Yep.
Any further discussion prior to going on here today?
There's no other A2 in the areas, huh? But you're adjoining commercial.
And city.
Yeah, and city.
On, on the south end of that map, Amber, there's much more development. How is that, down at the bottom?
Down here?
Yeah.
That's.
What zoning is that?
Rural residential, I believe. Right there, because they did two to eight acre lots, give or take is what most of those ones were. Both of them are about five.
Is that a loop subdivision?
Yeah, it's a loop subdivision. And I think they went to rural residential. So this is less dense than that one.
Amber, you told me before that you're allowing people to go to A2 because there were next some other A2 property and this has none next to it.
That's not what I said. I said if it's like adjacent property, when it's next to City of Spearfish, when it's next to the city limits, that is, that is right.
Okay, then we'll address the issue at the next meeting. We'll take action on it then in the second reading. Okay. Then we'll address the issue at the next meeting. We'll take action on it then the second reading.
Yep, second reading. So it would be May 13th at 9:00 AM is the second reading for this property. No notices need to be sent out this time. It's just, you just do the regular, and they'll be at this, this room again, and they'll make a final decision.
Yeah, we do. Okay. Is there any further items from the public that anyone would like to address at this time?
Would you know online?
Online or in the room? Same rules. If you'd like to get up and speak, obviously, we can't take any action on these type of items, but we would ask you to state your name and address for the record. Anyone in the room? Anyone online? All right. Over to items from commissioners.
Yeah, I mentioned last time, I thought the commission meetings, planning, zoning on the same day together, and that you'd be able to get, the commissioners have to vote on it, they get good information then from the staff. Now, they take the finding, zoning's word for it, but they still got to go through the same procedure. So I thought if we all had it all once, I, that would be good.
I don't know if our room is pretty enough to begin with, accommodate something like that.
Oh, you'd probably have to go up to the sheriff's, up to the jail.
And you have to check a bunch of ordinances if you're going to do that, just so you know.
And when we had the ETJ, I don't think that worked though that well, so.
No, I was on that board too.
Me too.
Yeah, me too. When I first started, I think I do remember, it wasn't ETJ, it was actually planning and zoning in the county commission. Wouldn't we, I think, I think at the time, I don't remember the rationale, but that was not satisfactory to everybody, and so they screwed it up at the time. I can't tell you why that was. Maybe things have changed now, but they used to do it that way. One would sit there and watch the other one act.
Yeah, I think it'd be a lot, a lot better, a lot easier. It would take one day to time and that. It would involve more people, and the people from both groups got to vote on it, so it would be easier for them if they knew more about it, knew.
Well, I guess my suggestion at this time would be for Bruce, your member, to maybe pose the question to the planning and zoning, see how they feel about it, and maybe discuss it here. So, Amber?
I'll have it to the next person.
All right. Anything else from the commissioners? Okay, say none. I'm going to take the motion to adjourn. Hello?
Yeah, adjourn.
Yes, we're done.
And we just went in recess on that last time, correct?
Yes.
So we're going to motion to reconvene.
So move and do that.
Wait five more seconds. I'll prepare the motion and say hi.
All right.
Now we're officially recessed, so. Did you have a receipt for the? And we will take a break here until.
Do you need those, Brenda?
Yeah, I can take it.
The department gets down here.
I'll email it to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Sarah. Have a great one.
I'm sure it's a difficult day.
Well, it's still a little.
Yeah, there's a bunch of phone calls and.
You're ready to show us off, or well.
I'd like.
I don't know, but I want to touch this one.
And. Carol Bueller's here for her appointment, so I would like to take that one first.
Okay.
If you guys want to.
So Carol would like to present first?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, come on up. Would you give your name and address?
Carol Bueller, 1423 North Third Street, Spearfish. Okay. I'm contesting my taxes, actually. I'm just, I was shocked when I got that notice that said 30.6% increase on property tax. It's a piece of land. That's not this address in Spearfish. I thought it was a, I actually thought it was 3.6, that there was a mistake. 30.6% increase in the land evaluation in one year. Really? How is that justifiable? How? I just, I'm asking. I'm asking. Does anybody have an answer?
They take different neighborhoods each year and look over everything. The department's job is to equalize property taxes, and the state requires us to be within 100% of it now, correct?
Yeah, so the state requires us, and so we attempt to get to 100% of market value. So we have to look at sales every year and see where we are, you know, accordingly. And then we do raise up neighborhoods to get closer to, we have enough sales, to get closer to market value.
So I understand your concept, but for one individual to get a notice in the mail says, "Your property tax just went up 30.6%."
Well, your value went up.
It valued.
Yeah, your taxes.
So my taxes will go up accordingly, I'm sure. That's the part that is.
It won't go up the same amount.
No, of course not.
No, yeah, yeah. But yeah, they will go up.
Yeah, so I would, I think I kind of figured it out with my thinking that it's about 50 bucks a month more on property tax.
You don't, we don't know until the.
Well, it's, I think it's probably, I did the math on what it's been.
Okay.
So it's like, well, let's just get, drag another $600 out of one person. And there's a lot of people up there that pay a whole lot more, a ton more.
With the property houses on it and stuff.
With the eval and the taxes. I have them up here.
Yeah.
And I, I'm just shocked. I think it's one of the most unfair things that I have ever had sent to me. And I'm going to ask this. I called several times and talked to, I don't even know who it was. So I talked to three or four people, and they're all women, basically. And some of the things that were said was, well, everyone in the whole Lawrence County, all of the landowners, they had more, an acreage, more than an acre, I think she said, maybe two. They all had the 30.6%. I said, "Did you?" And she said, "Well, I haven't looked at it yet." I'm like, "I just saw off a turnip truck, too." Has everyone gone up 30.6% in the whole county? You're making it sound like it's specific areas bringing up.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, no. No, all neighborhoods don't go up a certain percent. For example, Lead, three years ago, they went up 30%. Just about everyone in Lead went up around 30. Last year, they went up around 20, and this year around 15. So, for example, Deadwood, they were more 20, 20, 20. So everyone went up different percentages depending on how their sales were. Some areas do sell a bit higher than others.
Right.
For example, Saint Ange doesn't sell as well as Spearfish, or, so they didn't go up as high. And you can tell that by the sales, basically.
Okay, that's something that is not going to be solved today, obviously. But I was told, I literally was told, and this is the answer, I get it, "Well, if you don't like it, you really should go talk to your legislator." And I said, "Well, I'll probably do that, and I think we'll probably have it fixed by tomorrow." We all know how things go. And so it's based on sales. So I have some, she sent me some information that said, for instance, there's a piece of property up there that is for sale, $175,000. So what? No one bought it. I could sell mine, I could put mine up for a million. Would that increase all the property taxes around the area? Or if I said, and actually, I could get a lot of money for this place, probably, if I were going to sell it. Like everybody, selling, selling, selling. We have made a real good deal out of raising everything, so can't, most young people won't get a house. That's another story, but. So if I put my house for sale for $500,000, or my land for sale for $500,000, would every, just for sale, would property taxes go up because of it?
No, no.
Well, this is what I have in my letter, and you can read it. And then, and I have it, she even wrote me a map. And then I have where I was told that some of the property up there was, one, one place sold for.
Where's it?
Oh, I'm, it, sorry, I should have said Aspen Hills. And I bought it 11 years ago. And it's raw land. But anyway, she, there's a place that was for sale. Where was it? Oh. Oh, what was it? I have it written down here somewhere. Anyway, it was something like $750,000 or something like that, this property. It's not. I have the lot, Lot 48. I actually have it right here. I'm, a guy did buy that property, and he built a barn dominium on it. Super cool house. That is not raw land. And it's, it's what it says in my comparable. But that land, that lot just sold for this amount. It didn't. So I'm getting all of this, really, someone needs to be, you know, a little more factual.
Okay, Brad, would you, would you and your staff show us how you arrived at?
Sure, yeah, 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 yeah. I think that's, so Louise, if you want to show the grids, I guess, and what you use to establish values, that would probably be to help answer questions. I mean. So do you want to hand out your grids?
Sure.
And before, before that, I also got some comparables for Turkey Ridge. So this land, and they have black top roads. They have water and electricity. As far as I know, they have water, sewer, and electricity for all their lots when they buy them. So that's a, that's a pretty big deal. And also, we pay a road assessment fee, as you all know, I'm sure. In Aspen Hills, it's $750 a month. So it's not like the county provides us with water, sewer, road. What else is not included? Sewer septic, water, we have to dig wells. The road assessment fee, we have to have our own little road off of Tinton Road. So county doesn't pay for that at all. So comparables are not comparable. And some, and the other thing, I have one question before you show me all this. Is this done by aerial view, or does someone go up and actually look at the land? Because I was told, also on the phone by someone, one of the three people that I talked to several times, that it was dependent on accessibility. The differences in lots and the cost of lots were based on accessibility. Well, every single lot up there, they have them all, have this accessibility because we all pay the road assessment fee, and the road is there. So that's not, that's not even.
So sometimes. Let's let these gals present how they arrived at where they're at, and then.
Okay.
Continue on.
Okay, so I'll have you put my sales grid in your map, your first map in front of you, just so you get an indication of where the lots are located. Okay? So on the sales compare grid, of course, the first thing I list is the subject property. And if you'll note on the subject property, the address is 1900 Astor Road. It is tract 47. It is 10.61 acres. She purchased the property in March, March 30, 2009, for $89,900. That would be 16 years ago. Okay, currently, the assessed value on that, which is indicative of the land table that I used for every lot in there, of course, that land value is going to fluctuate based on size, et cetera, right? Okay, so if you look at your map, do you see the subject at the top center? That is her lot. And I asked her, "Road runs along like the north side there, the top of this lot." Okay? So the first comparable that I used is tract 49. Two lots down, it's highlighted in yellow on your map as sale number one. So it's literally two lots down from her. That is actually the most absolute comparable tract to her parcel, right? It is a little smaller. It is 8.32 acres. It was sold on March, her, yeah, March 25, 2024, so just over a year ago for $250,000 on the market. I believe that the property she referred to above the barn dominium, if you look at that map, there's a lot between the two. And the gentleman did build a house on that property. It was an older lot sale, so I didn't use it because it was old enough to not be indicative of the current market value, right? But then he has said, "Built a house on it," which is on the record.
Two years ago.
So that might be the house that she is referring, might be, I'm not a little bit positive. But it's between her property, the subject property, and the first sale, which sold for $250,000 last March. So that may or may not be the barn dominium she's referring to. So the parcel that she also referred, that it's for sale, described at the bottom of my sales comparison, comparable sheet, that is for sale for $175,000. That is 7.54 acres. It is, if you'll look at your map again, if you'll find the yellow highlighted sale number one on the first page of the maps, that lot is right next to it. And she is correct. Yes, people, that's lots for sale a lot of times, or parcels for sale, for a lot more than potentially they'll ever get out of it, because they can always reduce the value. It's just indicative of what properties people are asking, what properties are selling. And this is available, three lots from her. So potentially, someone could pay $175,000. She's assessed $128,000. My sale number one, literally sold for $250,000. My sale number one, literally sold for two hundred fifty thousand. She is assessed at a hundred twenty-eight thousand zero fifty, okay? So that's the absolute best compare. I didn't include extras because typically, typically, we try and come up with three to four comparable sales, right? The second one I lifted is actually another development. Because of, or if in most developments, you're not going to have fifty sales, especially in sales like developments like this. So I found one in Wild Turkey. Yes, it is on a paved road. It is in Wild Turkey, so it's closer to Spearfish, it's not off of Tintin Road. But it's twelve acres, a little bit bigger than hers, not much. But it's bare land, it's treed, it's similar.
It's got blacktop roads, water sewer.
Yeah, I did, I did, I did tell it, tell that that, that sold for three oh nine. That makes sense. It sold for even more than the lot, two lots down. Taking probably into account, it's got a favorite road, it's got, you know, that type of thing. And that is on the second page of your map. Uh, sale number two. Sale number three is in Pine Oak, some of its subdivision. That is to the south of Wild Turkey, kind of to the north of Aspen Hills. That is one that we also talked about that I included two weeks ago in a sales comparable, another land appeal. Uh, Pine Oak, that is on gravel road, that has topo topography issues. That's sold in October of twenty-four for a hundred fifty-five thousand. And that does have a lot more topography issues than her than it is on a gravel road. Yes, it is closer to town, but still there again, sold for a hundred fifty-five thousand as opposed to the assessed value of one twenty-eight zero fifty. My last sale I did include because that was the last other land sale most recently in Aspen Hills. But that was still two years ago in twenty twenty-three, in three years ago, almost now. And that sold for a hundred twenty-eight thousand, or a hundred twenty thousand, excuse me, in July of twenty-three. She's assessed at a hundred twenty-eight thousand for the twenty twenty-five assessment. That's almost a three-year-old sale, right in her development, okay? That is a little bit smaller in acreage, that is nine point eight six acres. If you'll also look at sale number two, which is Wild Turkey, that sold in May of twenty-four for the three oh nine, nine fifty. If you'll look below that amount on sale number three on your comparable grid sheet, it sold the first time in November of twenty twenty for a hundred forty-two thousand. That's indicative of what sales have done in Lawrence County from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, from a hundred forty-two to three hundred and nine. So I will also give you, and I apologize, I did not have this available when I mailed your letter. This is again, a topography sheet. Like I, similar to what I used two weeks ago. It is aerial, that shows the yellow lines. The wider the lines, the flatter the topography, the more buildable the area. I'll give that to you. Her lot is highlighted at the upper right side. You'll look at the other lot that's highlighted in blue on the lower left side. And the yellow lines are the topography. So you can see that in the lot in between them, that does have, what I'm assuming she's talking about would be the barn dominium. Right on Astor Road, the wider the line, the more buildable the topography. All three of those lots start with the wider lines. As it goes back, yes, the topography becomes less desirable as far as buildable area. And hers has actually really.
Very little.
Oh. I mean, the barn dominium has less than hers and they built a house on it. So with that, I'll leave it there. Unfortunately, our job is to assess properties at market value. Potentially, she would probably sell it for two hundred fifty thousand, which she admitted, she would probably.
I actually did, but that doesn't mean I'm selling it, you know, I know, I'm not. One thing I do want to talk about this, it is an aerial view. And it's unfortunate that you don't go up there and look at these because the problem with my property is it is so skinny. You cannot, it drops off, we have, there's some rules that they have, how far away from the road you have to be before you start to build. And it barely, a house will barely sit in there before it starts dumping down. And so.
I did drive out there.
Oh, you did? Well, you need to walk on it then.
I mean, like, like I say.
I'm telling the truth here and I'm not saying you're not, but I'm telling you that there's such a skinny area to build a house.
In between you and Masala, built a house.
I've been there.
They built a house. And it has less depth than her property does in Florence.
Actually, there's a skinny part to theirs and then it widens out. I've been there, I mean, and I certainly know this property. And where those trees are, I'm telling you, it's a skinny little thing. And the other thing is, it's limestone, so it's not an easy deal. You can't just drill well, you can't just get your utility lines in very easily. A septic, which I did not know when I bought it. I didn't understand it, I didn't know anything about it. My, my, I just didn't know. So it's not an easy thing to build up there. But no, this is a very skinny area to build a house on. This, my property.
And within reference to drilling a well, there is an old well share agreement that ran with the purchase of the lot from the house across the road. So the well is on the property across the road. That original well share agreement included her parcel and the lot next to it, which is where the.
Actually, it doesn't anymore, but not with it.
So the well share is still applicable.
Right, it is.
To your lot.
It is.
The person that built the barn dominium, um, developed his own well and he actually has a new well share agreement on record in the registered deeds with two other lots on the other side of him. So she definitely.
He moved here from Minneapolis. Now, now, I may not have to drill well, but to get to that well, I have to go under the road. This is all limestone, this limestone here, too, in that, in that house, that's where it's at, the house that you see. So you have to drill to get to that well. And I had a guy come up there a long time ago and to, to attach to it SMS, because the guy who built the well, it was a great well digger, but the guy that had the house, things weren't always so. He was a kind semi builder, let me put it that way. And so to attach to that well and go through their whole big lawn, which again is limestone, and to go under the road and then drill to get to where my, the, the building would be, it's a ton of money.
Okay.
And there's something else, I, I still have some things to say. So I've got these and, um, my lot was, I built, I bought it for eighty-nine, it's now up to a hundred twenty-eight fifty. And I did, and a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and fifty cents, to be exact. That big jump, thirty point six, and I don't know how anybody, I don't know how any of you would feel if yours went up. I do know how you feel.
All of ours did go up.
Thirty point six percent? Okay, well, whatever, okay, it's, it's just crazy. And I understand how the price of things went up. Everything doubled. When the banks put their one percent interest rate on everything, blah, 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 so everybody doubled the price of their houses. And then no one can afford to build. We have people coming in from California, Colorado, you name it, tons of money, they get to buy this stuff. So I'm going to show you this. Tract forty-two has nineteen point seven eight acres and its valuation is a hundred and four thousand, or, let's see. Yeah, a hundred and four thousand. Way less than mine. And their taxes are one thousand sixty-one dollars. Nineteen point seven eight acres. And by the way, we all have this road assessment, so we all have accessibility to the properties. Here's another one, thirteen point eight six acres. Their valuation is a hundred and one thousand. And their taxes they're paying are nine hundred and eighty-three. Let's see which one, thirty-five A is eleven point seven one acres and their valuation is eighty-three thousand. I don't actually know what their valuation is, I actually couldn't find that one. So I'll go on to this one, twelve point seven eight acres. Their valuation is eighty-three thousand. They have like three acres more than I do and my valuation is about forty thousand more. Like, tell me how that goes. And then their taxes total are eight hundred dollars. Then there's one for nine point eight seven, their valuation is fifty-three thousand, they pay five hundred in taxes. There's one for nine point eight seven, less than, just, I'm just a little bit more than that, just not even quite an acre more. Their valuation is forty-nine thousand seven hundred forty dollars. They pay a total of four hundred sixty-three dollars in taxes. There's, here's one, eleven point two nine acres, again, more than mine. They pay, their valuation is fifty-one thousand and they pay six hundred thirty-three. Here's one for nine point three nine acres. All in Aspen Hills, every one of them. This one has a big house on it, so you really can't. Well, actually, this is the one with barn dominium on it. Nine point three nine acres and this is tract forty-eight. Four hundred and twenty thousand dollars is their valuation, they got this beautiful house on it. And, um, I, I can't say what their taxes are because this is before they got taxed on that. There's another one, eight point three two acres. A hundred and sixteen thousand, I suppose that would be comparable, but let's see, that's about it. Um, oh, wait, here's one, Jim. Here's twenty point seven two acres, their valuation is eighty-nine thousand and they pay nine hundred and thirteen dollars total in taxes every year. That's almost twice as much as me and they pay thirty thousand dollars less than I do.
Yeah, I'm assuming that the topography is way different.
I don't know, I'm wondering. And so there's one here for thirty-five point two seven acres and their valuation is a hundred twenty-five thousand. And they pay one thousand three hundred sixty dollars. And if you think my topography is great, I think someone needs to go out and do another walkthrough because it's a very skinny area. And by the way, um, I did the fire wise about, about eight or ten years ago, something like that. So I cleared it, so unfortunately, it's even nicer, you know, so you get taxed more. But, um, I did that before anybody ever started doing it. And now, and then the county came in and did a lot more for free around there. But, no, these are not, this is not at all equal, as far as I can see. And you talk about the topography, I'm telling you, go out there and look at my property and see what you think. There's a drop off, there's no way, and by the way, you have to be able to see the house when you build out there. So if you build the house down, it's the, it's the rules out there, you have to be able to see the house from the property. Not that anybody could build on that slope that goes completely down, I can barely walk it.
Okay.
I was gonna.
Your recommendation is to stay at the one twenty-eight?
Yeah, our recommendation is to stay at the one twenty-eight. I, I guess I was just going to answer the question quick about the equalization stuff, uh, being of the lots. I mean, this isn't, the former director had gone through there a while ago.
How long?
It, it's been a while, I, I've been.
Someone told me it's been four years.
Yeah, um, and so he, I know at the time, had gone through and looked at accessibility, not the fact that they had a road, but how the lots, how difficult it was to get to some of the lots at the time. This was a little while ago and it was more difficult to get to those, those need to be looked at again, I'm not saying they should be. I think at the time, it was really difficult to get some of those lots, even though there was a road, it was really bad shape. And we had adjusted a lot of those for tho, those reasons. So, yeah, we do need to get back to that area and look at those lots and readjust those. Uh, a lot of times, we do do for topography, but I'm assuming that's a lot more for access, which probably needs to be looked at, yeah.
Probably needs a lot of things looked at. I just want to know where the justification is for someone that's got all of these acres, twenty-some acres, thirty-five acres, and they pay less taxes. I want, or their valuation is less and they pay less taxes. Do you know them or what's the deal? I think so, I think they did this year.
I make a recommendation, I'm going to make a motion for a recommendation. I'll talk about. Can you have a motion in a second for a recommendation, further discussion from the board? Seeing none of those in favor?
I, I just would like to make a comment that, that I understand your plight.
You do?
The, the prices have gone up exponentially, everybody's, has, has been faced with that, with evaluations. And it's certainly a challenge on some of these bare lots for equalization, trying to come up with like sales. I'm satisfied with the like sales that they did find, mainly the sale number one and four. I think that that demonstrates the value of, of the lots in there. So that's why I feel that this is fairly, uh, valuable. It is a jump, I'm not.
It is a jump, but you know, you can, you just, you are the ones that raised this, okay?
The real estate market has gone up and we're bound by state law to, to assess these values at as near a hundred percent as we can. So we're, we're trying to do that based on the sales that we can find.
Okay, do you have a motion for, anything from, from the board? Seeing none of those in favor of the motion, say I, I opposed.
Me, leave it as it is.
State to do an, an employee service to do maintenance on that road up.
I've heard about it.
Yes. And once that gets done, you get very active. There's a lot of people just waiting.
Oh, I'm sure they are.
That road's going to be done, yeah.
Yep. One thing about all of this, you've, everybody's taxes are going up and there's no one I know that is happy. It's not just on the land, there's no one that's happy about this. People are very, yeah, well, who's doing something about it? I mean, who's really doing something about it, give me a break.
The state is trying to, and we need to do something too. There's people come in from California and that and all the pay, the parts of the land.
They weren't willing to take care of their own state.
It affects everybody else.
The governor did sign a, a bill intended to be property tax relief. Now, I don't know exactly what that's going to mean or what the timing of it was, but there were probably, what are thirty property tax relief bills? I don't know how many there were in legislature this year. They're the ones that are in control of it, they, they, they did pass, I think it was the governor's bill. So we'll have to see what impact, if any, that has.
Well, it probably is only dealing with homes, existing homes and not land. So you get to keep getting your taxes from land. So I'm just saying that, um, all of the people that are coming in, that wouldn't even take care of their own states. So then they come here and they pay all this money, it's still got the same ethics. But they're going to, you know, how, how good is everything since all of this money has come in and all the taxes have increased our things better? What we're spending the money on the taxes for, how good are the schools? Have you, have you been paying attention? Not so great. All of these things, all, things are not better. It's one thing to pay a lot of taxes, it's another thing to see things not get better. And you guys are the ones that do, you're right in saying, I guess, I mean, I did not real, I don't know who's, who dictates who does what, but you have to follow state rules. Well, what, who's talking to the state, anybody?
Making decisions that we have to follow.
And who is dealing with that, does anybody deal with that? Does anybody contest it?
Just like, um, as Dr. Thomas said, they dealt with quite a few bills this last session. The governor's trying to get on top of it as well.
And those, those discussions are continuing. We're still working for different property tax laws.
Who is?
Uh, the county commission and assess associations.
Okay, so still talking.
Counties are trying to work with the state, it is, it's a.
For how long, have you been talking? I just want to know, you've been talking, well, that's my point.
Legislature has been trying to address this and it's been a challenge because of the evaluations that gone up in the last four years so much with, with, and the people that you mentioned that have come in.
So.
There's no easy answer.
No, I don't.
As well, yeah.
I think the board and I think legislature is aware, as you pointed out, just so you know, that people have come in and they paid an exorbitant amount of money for lots out of state, so I mean.
So I mean, people recognize that fact, right? But it's, it's not easy to just necessarily address that in, in the context of equalization and fairness to one and all. And, and so just so you can be assured that people know about that. And there, there, there's lots of people, Department of Revenue, the governor's office, legislators, the Association of County Commissioners. Lots of different folks are trying to find a solution to it, but it's not, it's not easy, right? Because you have to have fairness for the egg folks, no one wants to rank the egg, egg taxes, um, then you have the commercial. There's always an offset, so the, the pie just kind of gets divided, I think, in, in a certain way. So if you give somebody relief, then you pass it on to the next group, to the next group. And so the challenge is, is you do that or you find an additional revenue source. And I think that's part of the governor's bill now, find an additional revenue source, right? It's those are the kinds of things that they're exploring.
Well, I get that and it is a hard job, you guys have a hard job. I'm just saying, a lot of people have hard jobs. A lot, I was a nurse for thirty-eight years, I did a lot of hard work. And I was expected to do it and I did it. And to say, what we've been working on for years, well, years? Get it done. I mean, this is why we pay you. Yeah.
It's gotten worse in the last two or three years because of the money coming in.
All right, what's the next one?
Brenda, what's the next one?
We have four bears in the hills, we have those two that were the board asked to bring back for uh, some more information, yep, all right. Hey there, you can put it on the map, that'd be fine, it'll be, that part will be brief.
This one?
Yes, so we went back to go look at those two lots that are hard to build on. So I made copies for you to be able to see there, if you need the paper copy, it's definitely here. So lot eighteen is the one that I would recommend stays at the stipulation of seventy-five thousand. And lot seventeen, uh, you can decide if you see the photos, if you believe it maybe can be an in-between seventy-five thousand and the one twenty it ended up at. So the next one I would like to show you is the lot eighteen, so the dash one eight zero file. Yep, that's the one.
Is this the right one?
Yes. So if the, and if the photos up there are clear enough for you, I have this packet, if you, if you need it.
Do you want to pass this around?
Um, you don't have to, if you can see up here and it works, I, I figured this is better than cutting down that tree. Okay, so is this how we're going to do it for you? Okay, so these are the aerial photography of the pictometry maps showing the contour lines and then the outline of your property. So then there's also the twenty-five foot rule, so this would probably be the frontage. Uh, they do have the water easement that goes up to lot sixteen, so it could end up being a driveway and that could be your frontage. So you could also go twenty-five feet the other. So you start to kind of squeeze in, uh, buildable space, if we keep scrolling. So just kind of outlining if that were our twenty-five foot space and these are roughly our tens, that would be the buildable space. But in the next, oh, this is lot seventeen, I'm sorry, how did that?
It's Friday.
Wait a minute. Okay, no, I, let's look back. Okay, so, okay, so somehow, um, we started looking at seventeen, but now this is lot eighteen with the sharp corner, right? This is the one that I'm recommending be at seventy-five thousand due to buildable space. Um, they've kind of made a little bit of a easement road here, but it's not, it's just somebody took the bulldozer one time and it made a ledge. Uh, but right here where I'm drawing the line, even though this would be your buildable space, it goes this way and then up. And they couldn't even get to that pin to try to even, um, to ma, make sure that was the corner. So I would, this one is very hard to build on. It doesn't mean that somebody with a lot of money who was very creative in how they would do it, couldn't do it, but for the average to middle average, maybe above average could afford to take on the project. So I do have some photos of the land that continue. So that was the topography for you. And you can, you can scroll. So that was just showing how the water utility is actually, it was mismarked where they just started driving here because the boulder and the trees are in the way. And then you can see how it'll start here and go back up to the pointed corner. Um, that's the front of your lot. Just trying to show, there we go. So then this one kind of shows where the lot lines would be prospectively in the distance, so it gets uphill. The middle of the lot is where that real estate for sale sign is, so I'm just kind of trying to give you a good view of, of what's going on there. And then the for sale sign is roughly in the middle of the lot. And it shows the steepness and then there's probably a couple more photos and it's done. So one of the markers there just kind of showing when you're going off into the northwest corner to that corner pin, it's very steep there and very rocky, so.
Well, I, I see the sales signs, you have any idea who is asking for these?
I, his website does not show for sale prices.
I, I'm kind of sorry I voted last time to approve these for amounts assessments because they've created, I know about the subdivision, but he also has access to a surveyor and an engineer. And he sets prices and then he comes in for, he's saying they're not worth what we're evaluating them for. But I know he's asking upwards to twice what they're evaluating for, so I, I'd make a motion to leave the assessments where they're at.
Okay, I'll second it as a further discussion.
So we're on, on both plots or are we just on the one?
I'm on all of them, yeah.
Oh, seventeen? Yeah. There's seventeen.
Seventeen is the easier lot to build on.
And you were suggesting leaving that portion?
Um, I, I felt you could leave it or if you had to feel, if, after reviewing what I had for photos and topography, if you needed to go in the middle, I would agree with that.
Okay, vote for Mike's motion to leave seventeen and leave eighteen where it's currently assessed as well.
So do that.
Not change the valuation.
On eighteen, about seventeen from one twenty to seventy-five? No, he's Both for that one, okay.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You seconded, didn't you? No, Bob did, sorry.
Okay, it's been passed.
All right.
Sorry.
Oh, no, it's right, I did, I got to do my work and
um, and then I just have one. Uh, the one I have is very simple. This woman came in and I, I think I gave all my stuff to you and to keep, because it's kind of last minute. A woman came in and had gotten, um, denied owner occupied. And she had wrote, written a letter to me and of course she came in the day after four deadlines for the city, she's in the city of Whitewood. And she, um, so she couldn't appeal to the city of Whitewood to get the owner occupied on. We did take a picture of the, so she said we should, that they should get owner occupied. We did take a picture of her mobile home, it was already placed before November first. Um, Carmen had gone out there and, and for the building permit. The only reason that they couldn't, um, they couldn't get a res, what is it? A certificate of occupancy before November first because they couldn't get the building inspector from Whitewood out there in time. Uh, so it was November sixth or eighth, they don't have another owner occupied, they were just living in their parents' house while it was being placed so they could move in. We would give them owner occupied. Um, and I called the state and they said, yes, we could bring it to boards even after the deadline and just do that here because the county would do the change in classification from non-owner occupied to owner occupied. So that's why I brought it to the board. And the state said, yeah, I, I guess. Um, she said, just bring it to the boards and they can
As opposed to doing an abatement, they're doing it later, you're just
Yeah, as opposed to abating it out, adding on the value again as owner occupied. If she would have met the deadlines, we would have given it to her because she did meet the deadline for being in the house as it's just she couldn't get that certificate, certificate of occupancy in time because of their schedule. As long as, yeah, you, she could, she would have got it, yeah.
Your recommendation?
My recommendation is to give it to her.
So moved. Motion second for approval, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you.
NA what, classifications, you're changing it to?
Yeah, it would be NA D one, if it's in the city, C one S.
CM one to N A D M
Yeah.
One S.
Yeah.
Brett and Brenda, on all the equalization business in our county, can you think of a juror?
Yep.
Thank you.
So ten thirteen? Somebody, did somebody make a motion or a motion?
I will.
I'll second the vote.
Ready? All right, awesome, thank you.
So we are adjourned?
We're adjourned.
Okay. We're done for the day, gentlemen, we've got our, our committee meeting.
They're stopping the reporting now, I figured